Yeah, I know. Okay, if I can get everybody to their seats, we can get started. We're just a couple of minutes later than usual and... It was what? Oh, I know. How are you doing? I'm dying today. Oh, man. I tried to get so much business done today and it just wasn't working. Okay, city council meeting for April 25th, 2011 will now come to order. Remember, the times indicated next agenda items are approximate start times only. Please turn off all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Natale?
Here.
Mayor Potem Snyder?
Here.
Councilman Moreno?
Here.
Councilman Benson? Councilwoman Carson? Councilwoman Teeter?
Here.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman McAldowney? And Councilman Bullock?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Teeter, if you could please press your flashing buttons.
I know, because that's new. We haven't done that before.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Just barely. Mr. McAldowney is business. Mr. Johnson is family and Ms. Carson is business. It's getting a little sparse in here, you know? As we get closer to November. If I could get the audience to please rise from on a silence and then join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm not sure if anyone knows who this is or not, but it just caught my eye in the obits. There was a Randolph Morales and he was a WWII Army Vet. And he's from Commerce City and he just passed and he was 90 years old and I don't know really anything about him. I tried to find some background and couldn't, but he's one of...
Gonzales that was honored down at the State House this week. His grandmother and family live here in Commerce City and he will be back here in July for us to do a proclamation for him.
Terrific.
Both legs were by IED.
Oh, wow.
But he is doing very well and I hear about him all the time from his grandmother because I know her very well.
Terrific, and let's keep him in our prayers also. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance. To flag the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And whoever has the microphone, if they would start introductions, please.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Ellen Haug.
Eric Gutierrez.
Ivan Sosa.
Guillermo Serna.
Michael Cheney.
Tova Forgo.
Joy Bishop.
Jean Lefel.
Michelle Rogers, Community Development.
Lynn Halliwell, City Manager's Office.
Sandy Muchler, Adams 14.
Greg Clemens, Public Works Department.
Glenn Ellis, Public Works.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Roger Tenchberg, Finance.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Michelle Halsted, Communications Director.
Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development.
Bill Barker, Chief of Police.
I think that's everybody, thank you. It'll probably take me a couple of minutes to get back in the swing of things, but it's been interesting having three weeks off and I cannot thank Mayor Pro Tem Snyder enough because I didn't get any calls. I actually got worried and emailed her just to make sure that everything was fine and she did a wonderful job and I am thankful. Okay, next is Citizen Communication. And there were two public comment registers made available in the back for those who wish to address council. One was for non-agenda items, the other one was for action items. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record. You're reminded that you're limited to three minutes. City councils are reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions and express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve issues. I just want to make sure, Mr. Serna, was...did you have it on an action item for tonight? Is that what you wanted to speak about?
No.
Just the regular time? If I could have you come up first, sir? Good evening, sir.
Guillermo Serna, 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. This is just something that I myself have been looking at as far as...as we look at the Chinese business situation and how we look at bringing in business, please take a look at the human rights that are being broken in China. I read this morning, there was 500 and some people that were arrested for celebrating Easter. There are things that are happening more and more with China. So as you look at negotiations or whatever you do, at what cost are we going to do business with a country that doesn't respect religious rights of people that are within their own country? And these are the things that we have to look out after, is the freedoms that we ourselves celebrate that cannot be celebrated. And there's been other leaders in that country that have been arrested and put in jail just for speaking out and wanting some answers to some of their...whatever problems they're having there. And I know that it's important to us, but open your hearts a little bit as to what these people are going through over there. And in the billions that they are, there's a lot of things that are hidden behind all that mortar and all that stuff that's being built over there. That is just food for thought for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next person on the list is Michael...is it Cheney? Good evening, sir.
Michael Cheney, 7980 Olive Street, Commerce City. I actually live in the enclave, but I'm here this evening representing Community Enterprise. And just want to take a couple of minutes to let you know, we're sending 10 residents to the NUSA Conference this year in Anchorage, Alaska. Those of you that don't know what NUSA is, it's Neighborhoods USA, national organization that we belong to, that brings neighbors from all over the United States together to discuss different issues and educate people on how they can do different things in their neighborhoods. This year, some of the conference topics have to do with housing, citizen-government relationships, how do citizens interact with their local governments, security and police department issues, parks and public works, all kinds of different things. Of the 10 residents that we're sending this year, four of them have never been. They are actually pretty new to the neighborhood organizations that we're working with. Two of them happen to be monolingual Spanish-speaking residents. We're really excited about that. We did some fundraising and we've gotten some grants, but we're still a little short. So this year, at Derby Days, which is June 11th, we will be doing a raffle for $1,000. We are selling tickets at $10 a pop and Mr. Moreno has been nice enough to purchase two already, but I'd like to let you all know what we're doing and hopefully you'll be interested in helping support us. We're only selling 500 tickets, so you'll have a 1 in 500 chance, which is better than the lottery. And the money goes to a good cause. We're a little short, like I said, on the fundraising side. It's going to cost us almost $1,000 per person for this trip. And airfare is the big thing this year, that and the fact that it's in Anchorage, Alaska. So if you're interested, we have the tickets at Community Enterprise or you can see any of the board members from Community Enterprise or some of the residents that are listed as our members are selling tickets. The Benzos, Trudy, Smith, there's a whole list of us. So if you're interested, let us know. And if anybody else is interested, I do have 10 tickets with me this evening. So catch me at a break or something if you're interested. Thank you.
And just a clarification, when is the trip?
The trip is actually Memorial Day weekend. We'll be leaving town the Tuesday before Memorial Day and coming back on that Sunday. So we'll be here in time for the parade.
Okay, and Derby Days is after that, is that correct?
Yeah, Derby Days is June 11th.
Okay.
And the drawing will be held towards the end of Derby Days. We'll be selling tickets all the way up through that date.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Moreno?
Thanks for coming tonight and just want to say that I like those odds, that's why I purchased two.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, next is approval of minutes and there's two sets of minutes before council this evening. The first set of minutes are the minutes for the meeting of March 21st, 2011. I'll now entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, move approval of the regular meeting minutes, March 21st, 2011.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2011. Is there any discussion? I have a voice vote at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. The second set of minutes before council this evening is the minutes of the meeting of April 4th, 2011. Before voting on these minutes, I need a motion to allow myself to abstain from the voting because of my excused absence. I'll now entertain that motion. Ms. Teeter?
So moved.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow me to abstain from voting on those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Now I'll entertain a motion to actually approve the minutes of April 4th. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 4th, 2011.
Ms. Snyder?
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moreno, did you have something or was it for something else? Okay. Okay, Mr. Benson?
Yes, I guess this was the first meeting where we discussed this issue of what was discussed with Congresswoman DeGette about the Wildlife Refuge. And I don't think that this summary accurately reflects everything that happened in those discussions. I'd like to see it expanded quite a bit. But I'm only one vote, so this does not tell the whole story about what happened in that discussion.
Mr. Gaylor?
Well, the bottom line was is that the council opted to wait for an invitation from her office in order to determine what to...how to handle the request. If no request is forthcoming, then it's my understanding that you won't take any action. If she does make a request, then you're going to want to give her the courtesy of a reply. And that's the way the action minutes are left. Now, it's true, the discussion that went into that, that was a fairly lengthy discussion. Now, if you want some of the details of the discussion in there, I'm sure we can accommodate that. But the main thing that I wanted to assure, and I spoke to the city clerk's office of this, is to assure that the bottom line was covered where there wasn't a misunderstanding about whether you were going to then take some action in anticipation of a request from her office or not. And the way it is now is you're going to await a request from her office before you take any action. Now, we're open for any suggestions in that regard.
You know, I agree that that was the last vote that was taken, but there were three or four members of this council who were accused of breaching their fiduciary duty to the city by making backroom deals with Congresswoman DeGette. And there was a lot of discussion on that issue and nobody ever made any agreement with her to have any meeting. It was always contact Congressman Perlmutter, contact the city. That's not made clear in here. And I want that to be made clear, that I didn't make any deal and nobody else who was in that room, including Mr. Flannery?
Is that...
And Mr. Cordero.
Okay.
We did not participate in any kind of a backroom deal. Those were the accusations.
And that is a point well taken, but the minutes do not reflect an accusation, so therefore we didn't feel that it was necessary, if you will, to...
I think the minutes should reflect that there was an accusation of that sort made because that is what happened. I think the minutes are to reflect what actually happens at these meetings. I mean, that was a ridiculous discussion about a non-issue and I think we ought to get it in the meeting, in the meeting minutes about how it occurred because it was absolutely ridiculous, as everybody who's been listening knows.
Mr. Gaylor?
And to just whitewash it by saying, "Well, this was the bottom line last vote," I think is just a whitewash. It does not accurately reflect what happened or how this decision was arrived at.
Mr. Gaylor? What I don't want to do is work on minutes. I do not want to get into a discussion that occurred at a different meeting. This is not the time or place for it. You are the legal counsel. I need you to find some way to get around this.
Well, I don't think that's the wish of this council to find some way to get around it.
Wait, Mr. Gaylor has the floor, sir. Mr. Gaylor has the floor.
Well, I've also got the floor and for you to say he needs to find some way to get around this, I think is entirely inappropriate. That's not Mr. Gaylor's job, to find ways to get around it.
I agree with Mr. Benson. There was an accusation made that was falsely made. I would like to see that reflected in his minutes and disqualified because we were accused at that meeting in those minutes of having a backroom deal. And this is a time we're talking about voting on the minutes. So before we vote on the minutes, I would like to see that recorded and said that there were seven people in that office and there was never any backroom deal made, that we agreed to any meeting out of order. We agreed for her to call us. And I know that all the meetings on tape, all I would like to see is just what Mr. Benson said, that it be reflected in the meeting in minutes. And so that if it's ever brought up again, it's something that isn't just swept under the rug. Because he's right, we were accused.
Well...
And we were accused at the dais before we even went into council communication.
Mr. Gaylor?
My approach and the city clerk's approach in presenting minutes to you is generally to give you the facts of what the indecision that was that you decided upon. Now, generally, you don't find discussions about your dialogues that take place when you vote on ordinances and resolutions, if you will. Now, we can expand, if you wish, upon the minutes before you approve them, if that's your wish in this particular case, but the important thing is, is you end up with what you actually decided upon. How you got there is generally not my approach to put in the minutes for future discussion of how you got there. But it's your minutes, so city clerk and I will certainly accommodate what you wish. And tonight, then, you just don't approve the minutes, is what it comes back to.
Okay.
And we take another stab at what we're saying. But I'm hesitant to start that practice of including a dialogue in each motion that you made, but if you want it in this particular case, we can see what we can come up with to see what you approve.
Mr. Gaylor, basically, it isn't a dialogue in the council business where it says what we discuss.
He still has the floor.
It doesn't give enough information on what was actually...if anybody was watching it on TV or on computer that night, they saw a lot more than what these minutes reflect. And in the discussion, when it first started out, before we even moved into council business, when it was at the dais and the three-minute rule, we were accused of making a backroom deal. And council members said that they knew nothing about what would happen there. So I would just like to have a little bit more generalized reflection of actually what went on in that conversation. Not a full running, but so that if it ever comes up again, that it's in the minutes that that accusation was false.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm the one that takes the minutes. If I may interject, if you choose not to vote on the minutes tonight and not approve the minutes tonight, that's fine, I'm happy to take another stab at it, but I think that given the sensitivity, it seems, of this issue, then where I'm going to go with it is I'm going to do it verbatim.
Okay, that'll be fine with me.
But I would also, I would also, in agreement with the city attorney, it has been the practice here to do action minutes. Minutes are to reflect the actions taken at a meeting. You have the video recordings that are archived now for over a year. You have the Granicus Web, you have the streaming, you have all that is now available to the public for one year. I would caution you, though, on this tack, because what then will happen is, or what has been, what I've seen happen, is once you get into verbatim minutes, then you get people saying, "Well, I didn't say that." And you did say that. So I would caution you on going down that path. But I think too, because of the sensitivity of this issue, I will go back to Ms. Droter's comments and citizen communication. I will put them in verbatim and I will continue the rest of the topic to verbatim and present them again for council's decision. But again, that's...I'm happy to do that.
You know, Mr. Gaylor?
Oh, wait, Mr. Benson. I got four people here and you're the last person on the list. Let's wait our turn.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moreno?
I am fine with the minutes as presented. I do understand that they are action minutes as they have been in the past. I think Ms. Bowers' time can be much better spent rather than verbatim copying minutes into record. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I would agree with Councilmember Moreno as far as going to...I would be willing to approve the minutes as they are. I don't think getting into situations where we do verbatim minutes either is a good way to go. Also, you know, this issue was sensitive and it was hashed out for quite a long time back and forth. And so if they're going to be in there verbatim, I would agree with Ms. Bauer that we do include Reba Droter, everything that she said. If you're going to do the verbatim on the other side, you got to do the verbatim that started the whole thing. So then you would have to put that, all of that conversation that she had when she came in verbatim as well. So it just seems like it's getting into a lot. But if we're going to do it one way, we got to do it all, so it's all recorded. So, but I agree with Councilman Moreno and I'll stand by that.
Mr. Bullock?
I respectfully disagree with both of you and I would like to see them put in verbatim because a lot of the comments that were made that night weren't only made from the dais, I mean, from the citizens' communication, it was made from the dais too. So I would like to have those in there because just like she said, this stuff is only archived for a year. Two years down the road, I don't want somebody to come up to me and tell me what I said when I can reproduce the minutes and show them exactly verbatim what was said on that night. So I would like those minutes and this is just a one-time thing to be put in verbatim.
Mr. Benson?
Mr. Gaylor, how many times in the past have we had two council members accuse three or four other council members of unlawful conduct from this dais in a public meeting? How many times has that happened?
I don't recall that...
So this is a unique situation. Would you agree with that, sir? This is unique. It's never happened before, probably.
This is unique.
All right. And we had mainly Ms. Snyder and Mr. McAldowney accusing us of having these illegal meetings. And I want that in the record. I want to know who the accusers...well, let's get the verbatim transcript of the record and we can see what you said.
Well, okay, let's have a motion so that we know what we're doing. There's one person, and of course, the mayor wasn't here, so...
I wasn't here.
You won't be voting, but Councilwoman Teeter then is a swing vote, as I see it.
I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor on those minutes.
Oh, do we now? And we're at discussion at this point?
At any time.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to accept the minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I am not able to vote on this particular thing. So ordinarily, I would do a voice vote, but in this particular case, could you just go down the row, please?
One moment, we can set it up for a roll call.
Okay, thank you.
So I want you to load topic in the agenda and do start vote. Hit display control and hit.
I know, exactly.
I don't want to play politics. Okay, you're good to go. You may start your vote.
Okay.
Wait, hold on.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes for April 4th. If you would please vote now.
I don't have a little blinking light anymore.
Hold on. Are you flashing now, Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Okay, good. Start the vote. End vote. Display vote by name. Display vote results.
Okay, so the vote is no, it's failed. So do I need another motion as to what you're going to add to it? And Ms. Snyder, did you want to make a comment now or when we do the next motion?
No, I want to make a comment now. It was Ms. Droter that came up and said she received a phone call from Washington DC and the information she provided thereafter that started the whole discussion. So for Mr. Benson to say that I sat up here and made accusations just out of the blue is not correct. There was a conversation that was started and then all the information that came forward was what came forward after the initial conversation that Ms. Droter came up and started. So I don't appreciate him saying that I just all of a sudden, out of nowhere, started an accusation. That's not true. And I just have to say, this issue just keeps coming up again and again and again. So I find it a little odd that if there was nothing going on, it just keeps coming up again and again.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Well, nobody accused you of bringing this up just out of the blue, not out of the blue. You brought it up during, in the context of the council's discussion, you accused it...
No, let's not.
Why don't we get the minutes?
We're on the minutes.
Okay, we're on the minutes, I need a motion.
I would move that we get an actual verbatim transcript of the minutes and that will solve all of these problems, I think.
Only.
Right. That was the only part of the minutes that I had an objection to was...
But that's not what your motion said. Your motion needs to be more specific. Mr. Moreno, did you have a comment?
Just want to say that the action at hand is to provide Ms. Bauer with direction on the minutes. We could stick to that.
Okay. Mr. Benson, I have your motion. Mr. Bullock?
My second is on the motion for the minutes on this item only. Is that what your motion was on?
Did you verbatim?
Yes, sir, that was it.
Okay, I second that.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next item is a resolution. There's only one resolutions tonight, and it requires a voice vote. Resolution 2011-24, resolution authorizing and determining the necessity of the acquisition of certain property by negotiation. I'll now ask City Manager Jerry Flannery and my staff come forward to discuss Resolution 2011-1524.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know that there were a few questions over the last couple of days on this, and Mr. Greg Clements is here from Public Works to answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have with me Glenn Alice. He's the project manager from the city side on this project, and he can answer most of the questions. The purpose of this resolution is to give direction from the council to proceed with acquisition of rights away and easements for construction of 104th Avenue on Phase 3B, which is from east of the railroad tracks, Union Pacific Railroad tracks, to connect east to the already constructed portion. So there are 25 parcels, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Do I have questions from council on this? Any discussion? You're going to get off easy tonight, sir. Somebody must have heard that part about five minutes on everything tonight, because I have to smile at 7:30 in the morning.
Great, thank you.
We're fine, okay.
Well, I had a comment. Of course, we've got, I want you to know, Greg, that I've read all inch and a half of this stuff.
I expected that you did, Ms. Benson.
And I'm okay with it. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I will now entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Marino, did you want to make the motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 2011-24.
Mr. Bullock?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-24. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "A Resolution Authorizing and Determining the Necessity of the Acquisition of Certain Property by Negotiation or Eminent Domain for Phase 3B of the East 104th Avenue Widening Project in the City of Commerce City, Colorado, Number R-2011-24."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title, requesting a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes, thank you very much.
That was a tree.
Yeah. Onto study sessions. It's a presentation by School District 27J and Adams 14, which is really nice. I see some familiar faces out there. Mr. Flannery, would you introduce staff to come forward and begin the presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to let Mr. Brian McBroom, Community Development and Deputy City Administrator, introduce this and our guests.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As you know, the city collects development impact fees from new development in the city to provide a mechanism for new development to pay its share of public infrastructure costs. Examples that you may be familiar with are road impact fees and park impact fees. The city also collects impact fees for the city's two school districts. Those fees haven't been adjusted in quite some time, and so representatives of both school districts are here tonight to present information to you that we hope you will consider as part of a future request to potentially increase the schools' development impact fees. So no action is being requested of council tonight. These folks are simply here to present information for the city council to consider at a later date. It is our intent to present formal requests to increase each school's impact fees as part of a broader discussion that we would like to have with the city council regarding all of the city's development impact fees. Not only the school impact fees, but the other impact fees, examples which I mentioned earlier, as part of the broader discussion about the city's long-range financial plan. So there are two presentations being made tonight. The first is from School District 27J, and representing School District 27J is Terry Lucero and Joey Gerdom. So if the two of you would like to come forward?
I didn't see you there.
I was hiding. Good evening, and it's good to be back. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. School District 27J appreciates the partnership that we've had with Commerce City for a number of years, and we're looking forward to continuing to work together in our shared vision of building a great community out here. I am Terry Lucero, Chief Operating Officer for the district, and I'll be joined with Joey Gerdom here in a minute. And what I'd like to do is kind of give you the 30,000-foot view of school finance, and then we'll boil this down into the cash and lieu and the role there. So I'm going to give you some information that's specific to 27J, and then, as we get closer to the cash and lieu discussion, then I'll turn this over to Joey Gerdom. This is a chart that if, if you haven't seen it before, you'll see it many times over the next six to eight months. And what it does is it's basically School Finance 101. And it's kind of a difficult chart to understand, but I'll try to move through this. Basically, about 30, excuse me, well, it has been about 30 years now. The poorer school districts in the state of Colorado sued the state of Colorado and said that if you lived in a poorer school district, that you received an inferior education because you didn't receive the same number of dollars from the state. So after a couple of years of negotiation, they came up with something that was called the Equalization Act. And if you looked at the graph in front of you, and if you could imagine the top of that red line being straight, that would be the Equalization Act. And basically, what the state said is, "We're going to give the same amount of money to every student in the state for their education." So that was the first step. There's a little variance in that, and it is a little crooked, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. But let's assume the top of that red line is equal. Then the next thing they did is they said, "How much can the local community pay?" So you'll see where 27J is denoted there, and the blue is the local contribution. So I'm going to compare us to Boulder over on the clear right-hand side. You'll see that the local contribution from Boulder makes up a much bigger share of that per-pupil funding formula. If I had Aspen's up there, what you would see is all blue and no red, right? Aspen does not receive state support for local education. Why? Because there's adequate value in their total assessed valuation to pay for all of their needs, okay? So after they determine what the local contribute, the state comes in and backfills that red piece. So at the top of that red, you have an equalization formula. The reason that it's not straight, very simply, is the state has added certain factors and recognizes in different communities that cost different amounts of money to educate kids equally. So that's where that is. So anyway, that talks about, that talks about the state equalization formula. The green above that is what is called a mill levy override. And that's where, about the time the ink was dry on the legislation about the State Equalization Act, local communities went back to the legislature and said, "Wait a minute. Education is a local issue, and we retain the right to go to our voters and ask for additional money. So state, you can give us an equal amount, but the local community has the right to go back to their voters and ask for additional dollars." So you will see the biggest difference up there is the amount of green that's in there, and that's mill levy overrides. There is a little bit of green on top of 27J. It's almost not visible, because we've only passed one mill levy override in our history, and it's very, very small. If you look at some of those other communities, there are numbers that look like $1,500 per student and $1,800 per student, where in School District 27J, that's about $54 per student. Okay, so those are the three components that make up the operational funding for how we educate our students. I know that was very quick. Questions on that part?
Sorry, just looking at this, why is Westminster's much higher than the rest?
Okay, this is on.
Before we get to the green.
So what has happened at Westminster, a couple of things have happened. Westminster is actually a shrinking district. So there was a time when they've had a large, they had a large mill levy voted in. This is on a per-pupil basis, so when you divide it by a fewer number of pupils, it looks like a higher number. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
If you look at Littleton up there, which is, oh, just off-center to the right there, Littleton has never failed a mill levy override election. So what that looks like is 27J gets about $6,700 per kid, and if you look at Littleton's up there, $8,300 per kid. That's $1,600 difference, and that's a huge amount of money when you're thinking about 15,000 students. So anyway, that's the basic school finance equation. Going to talk a little bit about the cuts that we've received. This is the numbers that we're looking at this year. Currently, in the current fiscal year, we had about $76 million for our program. This year, we're going to have about 73.8. So that's a cut of about $2.6 million. The numbers, the state legislature has not signed that legislation as of this afternoon, so that's still an estimate, but that's about $2.6 million less than we had last year. If we looked at the year before, that would have been another $6.2 million cut. And if we looked the year prior to that, it would have been another 2.2. So we're well over $10 million in cuts in per-pupil revenue over the last three years. Yes, it shows the $2.6 million number there. This is all based on the number of students that we have. So if we have a reduction in students, we have less revenue. So it's really important for us to provide a really high-quality education, so we don't lose students to other districts or to charter schools within the district or whatever the case may be. In addition to that, of course, we know that we have rising costs. Utility costs go up, fuel costs go up, all those kinds of things go up. So if you take the 2.6 plus the 1.4, and if you look at the bottom of this, this is our target for this year, about $4 million in cuts from last year's budget. If we talk about what that looks like over the years, last year, we had to cut 81 teachers, 54 classified staff, and reduced hours for 108 additional positions. So we're running pretty lean right now, and we're going to take another $4 million cut. Once again, I'm just talking about operations at this time. This is where we think our per-pupil funding's going to end this year, and you can see in FY '12, which is this coming school year, is about what we had five years ago. So while the rates of utilities and fuel and all those other things have gone up, we have more students and about the same amount of money we got five years ago. So you can tell it's a pretty tight situation for us out there. So in addition to the money that comes from the state, there's only two additional sources of revenue. There's grants, of course, which I'm not going to talk about, but two other sources of revenue that we have to operate on. We've talked about the mill levy override and then school construction bonds. So I'm going to take you through that real quickly, and then I'll turn this over to Joey Gerdom. A mill levy override has to be approved by a voter, by a vote of the people, and basically, it can be used for any purpose, any lawful purpose that's approved by the Board of Education. So typically, there's a mill levy override, and they'll tie it to things like class size or technology or whatever. Historically, school districts have not used mill levy override for capital construction. It's for operations, okay? So when we talk about a school construction bond, a school construction bond also has to be approved by the voters, and it can only be used for specific purposes, and they're all related to construction or improving grounds or the materials to fill those new buildings. So that's what school construction bonds are about. So there's operations, and then there's construction. So basically, this gets a little more complicated. A school construction bond is a loan. We go out and borrow money, and we can borrow money up to 25% of the assessed evaluation of the district. So roughly, we have about $800 million of assessed valuation in the district, so we can have $200 million worth of debt. Right now, we have $160 million worth of debt, so we could go out and borrow $40 million if we went out today to build new schools. A new high school, as you know, is probably going to run $70, $80 million. So even if the voter said, "Go out, we give you the authority to borrow the money," we can't, because we're restricted by law, by this bond capacity issue. So this is where it gets even more tricky. So we all know what happened in the last assessment go-around. Our assessed value fell. Once again, we can only have 25% of our assessed value in debt. So if assessed value falls, what happens is we borrow, we can only borrow less money. So this year's an assessment year. We're worried about what might happen, and there's a good chance that if assessed values fall, we would be restricted even further in the amount of money we could borrow to build new schools. The second part of this equation is a thing that's called the Gallagher Amendment, and this further restricts us. What the Gallagher Amendment says is, at the end of the day, there has to be this proportional amount, 55% of your assessment has to come from non-residential, and 45 has to come from residential. Regardless of what the true assessment is, those are adjusted, okay? So what we're anticipating this year is probably a 10% reduction in non-residential assessments. So what that does is that automatically ratchets down the residential side of that 55-45 equation. So to show you what that means to us, right now, as I explained earlier, we could go out and borrow about $40 million to build new schools if the election was held today. If there's a 10% reduction in the non-residential side, which typically would look like the commercial space, that $40 million goes down to $16 million worth of capacity. So if there's a $10 million drop in the assessed valuation of non-residential properties, they automatically have to ratchet down the residential side, and they do this on a statewide basis, and the numbers that I'm telling you is calculating it locally. So if we have a poor assessed value this go-around, and it hits the non-residential side, it's really going to hurt the district's opportunity to go out and build new schools going into the future. If that resident, if that non-residential side drops 20%, we drop below zero in our capacity, right? So if we see a 20% reduction in non-residential property values, School District 27J will have no ability, zero ability, to borrow money to build new schools. So is everybody, does everybody following me on that part of the conversation? Yep. So anyway, I guess that really just points out how important that when we do come out of this assessed valuation drop, that these other components fall into play. First of all, we're all familiar with the Capital Facility Fee Foundation, which is that joint partnership where developers in the community agree to participate and contribute on a per-unit basis to the construction of schools. They've contributed millions of dollars to schools, including construction at Stewart Middle School and Prairie View High School and Prairie View Middle School. We will not have enough money in our bond fund, in our construction fund, to go out and buy land, so land dedication is incredibly important. That first part of the conversation was about operational money, what it takes to educate those students. Now what I'm telling you is, even as tight as we are on the operational side, we're tighter on the capital construction side. And then the cash and lieu falls within the land dedication piece. So basically, that's a quick overview of school finance, and if anybody has any questions, I'd answer them now. If not, I'd like to turn this over to Joey Gerdom. Questions?
Okay, Mr. Benson, do you have a question now?
There are three sources of your income, and only three, I guess, based on that. Can you go back to that chart, you know, the multicolored chart? Because you've got the local taxation, where it looks like we're very low.
That's correct.
And we've got the state contribution in the red.
Right.
And we have just a little sliver of overrides.
That's correct.
So.
That's on the operational side.
I guess that was one reason. I remember back during the fall of the campaign about '60 and '61, that would probably have hurt us less than other school districts, because it would have eliminated all the mill levy overrides across the board, wouldn't it?
That's correct, right.
But we still need to get some of that, but we've only got... But we've only got, anytime we do any kind of an increase, with the exception of the state funding, it's got to be through a taxpayer vote.
That's correct.
And do you have any idea at this point in time when you're going to try to go back on the ballot in 27J and propose a tax increase?
So there are a group of citizens that are organizing at the present time and are going to be asking the Board of Education to consider doing that, okay? We ran into a tough situation in the last election. To conduct the election, okay, Adams County charges about $120,000 to conduct that election, okay, to distribute the ballots and collect the ballots. So you want to make sure, and the district has to pay that amount, so you want to make sure that you have a reasonable chance that you can be successful before you slide that $120,000 across the table, because that comes out of your operational dollars. The intent of the district is to do some survey research through the remainder of the spring and into the summer. There is a campaign that has been started to see if we're able to move what this community has historically voted, and that looks like about a 55-45 split. And that number hasn't changed historically, 55 being against it, okay? There's been campaigns with $100,000 raised, and there's been campaigns with $10,000 raised, but we're not, we have not been effective in letting people to understand how important these resources are to us.
Tell me how the state contribution is. It's based on assessed valuation within the district, is that right?
Okay, so the first thing they do is they establish that top line. So let's say that's $6,500 per student, okay? And then we're going to determine which share is the local and the state. The amount that you can assess residential for school is fixed. Okay, so you take your total assessed times about 25 mills, and that comes up with part of that money, and then the state has to backfill that. Because the, all school districts are fixed at that 25 mills for their assessment for education.
Yeah, I can, you and I need to go out to lunch because I'd like to become more educated on this whole, the whole system of school taxation. If you need some help in Ward Two, all of which is in 27J, would you give me a call?
Absolutely will. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy, sure.
And I look forward to the opportunity to sit down with you. Other questions?
That seems to be it, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Joy Girdam, who is our planning manager, to talk specifically about our cash in lieu needs.
Evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's been quite a while since I've been here. I'm glad to be back, talking to you about a new issue tonight, fees in lieu and land dedication for school sites. The purpose of the provision in state law for fair contribution for public school sites is to enable the school district to adequately provide for future school site needs based on the generation of new students from new residential development. If school sites are dedicated or the revenue generated from developers are inadequate, then taxpayers must be asked to contribute to support the purchase of and development of school sites. We are grateful that Commerce City recognizes the value of good schools to community development in their city. And from what you've just heard from Mr. Lucero, you can see that land dedication and fees in lieu are critical to our school development. Without the provision of land dedication and school fees in lieu, none of these six schools would have been possible within the timeframes that they were constructed. Timig, Second Creek, Turnberry, Stewart, and then, of course, Prairie View Middle and Prairie View High School all serve Commerce City's students. As part of your community indicators report, each of your school districts, well, both of your school districts, reported on how enrollment compared with capacity. And I would just say that in spite of the downturn in the housing market, our enrollment continues to grow. During the height of housing development, we were growing over 1,000 new students a year, but we're still growing between 500 and 600 new students each year. And that's basically because of the young families that moved in prior to 2005, '06, and '07, and now have students in school. So each of our succeeding kindergarten classes are larger than the previous year and are larger than the exiting 12th grade class, and that's what's causing our current enrollment growth. So when the housing market picks up again, and we're kind of counting on about 2013, hopefully, but even when that happens, no matter when it is, our existing capacity is going to be significantly challenged. So should the district prefer to receive fees in lieu of land dedication? Your subdivision code allows for $619 per single-family unit, which is based on a per-acre value of $32,077. However, if a developer chooses to dedicate a school site within a subdivision, the land that's turned over to the city is zoned, it's platted, it's graded, it has streets and utilities stubbed to the site. So the dedicated site value, or the value of the land that's dedicated whole as opposed to fees, is of greater value than the fee itself. And I'll go through that in a little more detail in a little bit. So I'm going to give you a case study here. So Stewart Middle School site was located, as you probably well remember, based on staff and citizen input. And we did use fees in lieu to purchase that land, and the raw land cost $59,000 per acre. It was not zoned, it was not platted, had no water, sewer utilities, had no paved streets to access the site, and it required environmental cleanup. So the total cost per acre, we estimated, was about $115,000. In 2008, we conducted a study to determine what might be an appropriate value should municipalities choose to increase our fees in lieu for school sites. And we looked at all land that was sold during the period of 2005 to 2008, and it was not, actually, it wasn't all land. It was only all land that was appropriate, that would have been appropriate for school sites. So we excluded commercial, and we excluded industrial land sales. So residential and agricultural was about what was left. And so we took the average of all of those land sales, and in the Brighton area, it was $15,115,000. In the Commerce City area, $47,261. In Thornton, $91,810. So if you average all of that together, an average per-acre land cost during that period And I'm going to skip to this slide, and then I'll come back to the one that I skipped over. So if you look at a typical rectangular school site, the figures that I'm going to give you next are based on the 208.7 linear feet that is frontage on two sides of a school site. So this is what we've estimated that it costs to provide the basic infrastructure for streets, for water sewer, storm sewer, utilities. And so it's about $96,000 per acre to provide those, that basic infrastructure to develop a school site, and it's based on the cost of half of the street. And if you look at, then, the cost of the raw land, and in Commerce City, the cost per acre to purchase water, that basic infrastructure cost, which is, we've kept the same across the board. At the bottom of that slide, you'll see what it costs, or what an estimated cost is per acre for a school site in each of those areas. So in Brighton, $147,000. Commerce City, $160,000. Thornton, $187, almost $188,000. And if you averaged across the district, $159,000. I'm sure you're interested in finding out what other municipalities and other school districts are getting for fees in lieu at this point. Some of the information is somewhat dated, but you can see that, this is the most current information that I was able to obtain, that even, even as long ago as 2000, in the Weld RE4 area at Windsor, the per acre, or, excuse me, the per single-family development fee at that, even at 2000, was $1,362. And I'm not going to go through all the details, but you can find 27J Commerce City and 27J Brighton down there toward the bottom of the list. And if you averaged all of those per single-family dwelling fees, it averages out to about $1,188 in an average per acre value of $91,256. If you took Commerce, or if you took 27J out of the averages, it makes a little bit higher, $1,296, and $101,000 per developed acre. And even if you took the highest amount out of that average, you still end up with a little over $1,184,278 per acre. So what we're here today to do is just have you consider this information, and remember that your current fee is based on a per-acre value of $32,077 and $619 per single-family dwelling. Certainly, any fee change that I'm sure that you would implement would only affect new development, not anything that's currently platted. And that what we might, what we would be asking for, if we could, would be $1,441 per single-family dwelling, be based on that average of $87,895. And what that means, what that would include is just the cost of raw land plus only one quarter of the cost of infrastructure. And when Sandy Muchler comes up, she's going to talk a little bit more about that recommendation. But that's all I have in my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions from council?
Ms. Teeter? Yes, just to make sure I heard you correctly, at the end, you said that you were asking from the city, or $1,421 per single-family resident throughout the whole city?
Well, just in 27J.
Okay.
Yes. And just for new development, and I-
Oh, for, okay, I understand now.
I failed to mention that we've already approached Brighton and Thornton, and both of those cities have agreed to a fee increase, but we are not able to increase our fees in those municipalities until all three municipalities are on board and the fees are equal across our district. So Thornton has agreed, Brighton has agreed, so as soon as Commerce City agrees to a fee increase, whatever it is, then we must, we're bound by that agreement with those two cities to charge the same across our district.
This would be for future development, then?
Correct.
I thought you meant existing, and I thought, oh, man.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. No, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see anyone else. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Plenary, who's next?
Do you want to go ahead, Brian? Introduce Sandy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Tattel, council members. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm Sandy Muchler, I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Adams 14. And I would like to let you know that Sue Chandler, Superintendent, had planned on being here, but she sensed her regrets. She ended up having dinner meeting with student council, so they kind of won out, probably because of the dinner, but just wanted to let you know. And so, let me make sure I got the clicker here. So Terry Lucero from 27J did share a lot of financial information with you about the direct impact on Brighton 27J. Adams 14 has similar impacts, or that it's the same dollar amount on the state equalization amount, where we're actually going to see a reduction of about $367 per pupil. So Adams 14 is going through the same different, the same scenarios that 27J is, but I'm not going to go through all that information. I think you did a great job of sharing that with you guys tonight. When we're talking about land dedication and cash in lieu fees, the 27J does have some different issues than we do because they are growing so rapidly, and they have so much more space that they're going to grow into. Commerce City is a little different for Adams 14, that historically, there hasn't been a lot of large residential development. However, there is potential for it, and I want to make sure that we are also having the same impact as 27J and on board with the other school districts that come across Thornton also. I think the best way to work through this is really give you a picture of what that would look like, and give you an example of what a proposed residential subdivision would have on a district. So if we had a proposal for a subdivision to come in, and they had proposed 140 units, we can statistically look at how many students that would generate. And we're going to use for our example that that's just under one student per household. So we would look at 135 students. Now statistically, that generation rate is going to be a little different for each district, so I'm going to use the one that we would have at this point. If you have those 135 students, and they're coming in with their families, it does have an impact on schools. And when you look at that, it seems like it might be not a big deal to have those absorb those 135 students into our schools. We have a high school, we have two middle schools, we have a PK-8, we have six elementary schools, two preschools, our alternative high school, and a K-8 charter school. So 135 students doesn't seem that much, but it is actually a huge challenge and an opportunity to accommodate this type of growth. Enrollment at most of our schools currently meets or exceeds our capacity. We are looking at reconfiguring our structure currently for this year to meet our overcrowding and some of our undercrouching capacities. You may have heard of some of those changes that we're looking at for our middle schools, where we'll be shifting Hanson Middle School students back over to Kearney Middle School. And this is all in an effort to address our overcrowding issues that we have in the schools. But if we were to add another 135 students across the district, we would definitely have a space issue, and we'd want to make sure that we can accommodate those students and give them a proper space to be educated in. These 135 students that result in an increased demand on schools, there's also an increased demand on roads, water, parks, and even recreational facilities by both the students and their families. So if we look statistically, and again, it's different for each district, but we would look at each student requiring .02 acres of a facility to be educated in. Those 135 students, then, would require about 2.7 acres for a facility. Now, city codes generally allow for districts to choose land dedication or a fee in lieu of land to address the needs. It really isn't effective for a district to purchase land and build a new school just to accommodate these 135 students. So in this scenario, we would be using, it would be more appropriate for the district to ask for cash in lieu if he did. And in doing so, we'd need those to expand it. Over the last few years, Adams 14 has expanded our elementary schools, and the cost of expansion was funded by a bond. If you remember right, we did expand all of our elementaries and added kindergarten classrooms to all of them. The bonds are repaid by the taxpayer through a mill levy that will take 20 years or more to pay back. So when we look at the cash in lieu of what that could do to help bore the costs of the developer could- developer, could actually absorb those costs upfront. And we look at what the Commerce City code is, and we have $619 per unit, and this is something that Joy mentioned. If we were to take that 619 and multiply that times the 135 students, that would generate That doesn't really leave a lot realistically to not only add on a classroom, which isn't feasible, but to accommodate those students in any way. So I wanted to share with you some of the comparisons. If you look at the first row that we have here, the current fee in lieu calculation, first column per acre value, the $32,077 generates $86,663 in cash in lieu fees with the $619 per unit rate. We do have updated information that the actual cost of land in Commerce City through Adams County Assessors is about $51,115, which would generate $138,098, a per-unit rate of 986. So you can see kind of how outdated the code is to where we are with actual land costs at this point. Looking at other comparisons, if we were to take the average land cost plus 25% of the cost to prepare the land, so that's doing the infrastructure and preparing the land to make sure that you get the frontage areas covered, you would have a value or a cost to preparing that raw land of $87,397. Total cash in lieu generated is $236,122, with a per-unit rate of $1,687. And it's not really until you get to this point that you actually are generating enough funds to actually accommodate those 135 students. Another comparison, if you were actually to fund 100% of what the cost to have prepared land is, a per-acre value of $159,405, which would generate $430,376 per unit. So this is the direction that eventually we would like to get to, but we do understand that the current state of the economy and such a large increase in that would maybe not be very feasible at this time. So we are looking for a recommendation to be the same as what 27J is and what that would look like for Thornton and Brighton also, and having the average land cost plus a quarter of the cost to repair the land. So we're looking at a per-acre value of $87,397, which would ultimately be $1,687 per unit. We would also look to see that maybe we could look at a gradual increase for that, to where we could add another 25% of what it would actually get if you got raw land that was prepared over the next few years, to where it would increase 25% in two years, another 25% in two years, to where you eventually get up to the 100%. And then with the adjustment and assessed value every other year, we could look at that per-acre value to make sure that we always stayed in line with that. So that's kind of what the scenario looks like, if you were looking at a subdivision and the dollars that would be generated from that and the impact on the students. So just kind of wrapping up, it would look the same in 27J, but probably on a larger scale, they would be doing subdivisions greater than 140 students. If you have any questions at this time?
Mr. Moreno?
Sandy, thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
You mentioned that school district 27J is increasing at a much more rapid rate than Adams 14. Do you know that rate for Adams 14, how much student enrollment is increasing by?
Well, our student, excuse me, our student enrollment is increasing. Last year, we increased by a little over 100 students, and then we're looking at an increase of about 70 this year. And that's in full-time equivalent students.
Gotcha. And you mentioned, and I saw the numbers for this a couple of weeks ago about the capacity of Adams 14 in the schools, and I found it pretty interesting that, you know, all the schools are either at or over capacity. What is Adams 14 looking at in terms of some strategies in how to address that? Are you, you know, you mentioned Hanson and shifting those over to Kearney. Are you looking at, in any near future, building another school or anything like that?
So the reconfiguration that we're doing this next year, if the board passes that, that's a kind of a Band-Aid and to address our current issues. We do have a comprehensive facility master plan that was adopted by the board this past year. And in that, we're actually looking at rebuilding all of the schools in our districts, and we would start next with rebuilding Kearney would be our first middle school, and then we'd go to Adams City Middle School. And we would look at increasing the capacity of both of those until they get to about 600 students per school. And then we would also, I'm sorry, 800 for the middle schools. And then we'd look at the elementary schools and rebuild each of the elementary schools to meet 600 student capacity. And then eventually, what that would do is create the two middle schools feeding into the high school, and then three elementary schools into each of the middle schools. And then that kind of leaves one school out, because we have the K-8, which we're looking at making a K-5. And then that would become more of a preschool, pre-kindergarten center for early childhood learning. And we would also look at that. And that last school would be Hanson, PK-8.
Great. And that additional capacity could be accommodated on the current sites through rebuilding of the schools?
Yeah, we would look at, we are very fortunate that all of our school sites have a large amount of land with them, so we would be able, depending on the architect and the plan of how that would work, but the goal would be to actually build a school next to the one, and then after that school opens, we tear down the old one. That's like best-case scenario. Of course, it might take us 30-some years to get there, but we just have that issue going on, where all of our schools are kind of built around the same time period, and they're all aging at the same rate, and they all need to be rebuilt at this time.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you, Sandy, and I'm on that facility review committee, so everything that she just mentioned, I have seen numerous times, and it's a grand plan, and it's going to take a lot of money, but it's got to be done. And it's just one of those things, we don't know when, but we know it has to be done. But I also would like to thank Sandy and Joy and Terry for coming in tonight, because we are a little bit behind. We haven't increased our fees since 1990, and we were the first to do this, have fees in lieu in the state of Colorado, and everybody followed our suit, and everybody did, added to it, and we're still on 1997 fees. So we definitely have to do something to get our school districts up to date. But thank you all for coming in, because you're right, we are way behind. Not a little bit, we are way behind.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno again.
Sandy, I know that the state isn't exactly where you turn to for education dollars these days, but would Adams 14 qualify for some of those BEST grants that the state offers since it's targeted at aging school facilities?
Yep. Yes, we have researched BEST very heavily. We actually have three BEST grants in for this cycle. However, those grants are for roof replacements, which is something that BEST doesn't really want to get in the business of roof replacements. But at this point, it's our, a greater need. We have major issues that when it's raining outside, it's sometimes raining inside. So we want to take care of those. The problem with going for a complete rebuild of a school is that the plumbing, the electrical, the roof, those pieces of the buildings are deteriorating and in poor condition. And, but the structure, because of the type of building with the brick, is very solid. So a lot of our issues for needing new schools is not just the physical part of that, but the academic issues that we have with that, where our school space, the classrooms are like 600-square-foot classrooms, so they're very small. So when you put 30 middle schoolers in a classroom in that kind of space, they, creates not the best positive energy in this, for learning. So we really want to get more to where you have those 800 to 900-square-foot classrooms that's more conducive to learning. So it's poor shape of the buildings where it's a lot to keep them working. We are pretty much in a lot of our schools at the max that we can handle for electrical outlets, so as we're trying to move into the 21st century and have technology at the forefront of our classrooms, it's a challenge, because we don't have enough breakers and outlets to meet those needs.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate both school districts coming down.
Thank you.
Mr. Flannery, I'm not sure who to direct this towards. Something was mentioned about the Thornton and Brighton need to go along with this, so that everybody agrees to the same thing. I would imagine that's staff working together?
Correct.
And so that, and then once that happens, and I don't know if that's Mr. McBroom, if he's doing, whoever, but I'm directing it towards you, then you'll come back to us and say, okay, this is what the three cities are looking at doing?
Correct. We're tentatively looking at, we have an actual item that's coming back to council on all of impact fees in the city, because we really need to look at it, all of them in a comprehensive fashion, and how they compare to the region. So one of the things leading up to that, and before we have another presentation on this specific impact fee, is to reach out to those other organizations and have discussions with them on how they're approaching the same issues.
Okay. And then, just being the devil's advocate on this part, so please, I'm 100% behind schools, don't get me wrong, but are we bringing the builders into this little discussion beforehand, so that they'll have some idea that it's coming, or that we're considering it, or, because I mean, it's going to be the same builders in all three cities, but, so that it's not a surprise?
Impact fees, as Mr. Gaylor will tell you, there is a legal nexus, and that's a fancy word for saying, wherever you're impacting these developers, you have to show the connection to where you're actually using that money.
Okay.
So in the process of looking at impact fees and increasing them, we have to reach out to the development community, as well as have input meetings with the neighborhoods and citizens.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's involved. Mr. Moreno, did you have one more?
This is a question for staff. Does growth potential in either school district, obviously, I imagine that influences how much those school districts could ultimately raise based on these impact fees, correct? Because if you look at the two in our comprehensive plan, the core city is near a high 80 percentage in terms of build-out, whereas the northern range, we're not even close to anywhere near that. Could you just comment on that a little bit for me?
I think I can handle it. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moreno, you're absolutely correct. Impact fees, in their name, in the name itself, talks about what impact is occurring by development. So the development that's occurring is mostly in the northern area, north of 96th. I believe Eagle Creek is within 14. I believe 14 actually goes into a little bit of, I don't know where Sandy went, where it goes into Thornton, I believe. So there might be potential development in Thornton. We may see one of these pieces of land redevelop or come in with a new subdivision, but I don't think it'll be nearly as high as what you see up in the north.
Absolutely, yeah, and that was my question, because core city, there's not as much room to expand in the north, and so those areas of development, or it would apply to redevelopment based on your comments as well?
Well, that would be, if you were going to, let's say, level an area and rebuild new homes, I would have to ask legal, but my layman opinion would be that that would be new development that would have an impact fee associated with it.
Gotcha.
Okay. He agrees, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I'm correct, or explain to me if I'm correct, the developers can offer land in lieu of a fee also, correct?
Correct.
And I know that our main topic right now is fees, because it's a money issue, not so much a land issue. At times, it might become a land issue if they want to build another high school or have land, that is, but they can come forth and after they see these fees, they can offer up land in lieu of it.
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item is Long Range Financial Plan Presentation on Golf.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, just one more question on that topic. Looking at, I mean, I can't help but look at it as if, had we raised these impact fees before, that huge spurt of development occurred up north, that 27J might not have it as hard as they do right now. I'm glad that we're taking a look at it now, and that we are working with the school districts and the builders to work out a solution that works for everyone, but I just see that as maybe a missed opportunity back then. And I'll try not to get on my soapbox too much, but I do think that the state of education funding in this state is shameful, and I think that our kids deserve more than what they're getting right now. 27J has significant challenges, and I don't envy your challenges and what you need to overcome to make sure that you accommodate all those kids that are going to be going to school up north. Adams 14 also has its challenges. Having gone to school there my entire life, the facilities were even outdated when I was there. And these are our kids we're talking about, and this is their education, and we should provide them every opportunity for them to succeed. So just my brief comments, thank you.
Quickly moving along, we're going to go to Long Range Financial Plan Presentation on Golf, Open Space, Parks and Trails. Mr. Flannery, who will be presenting that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be Roger Tinkleburg.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This, I'm happy to report, is the last presentation regarding capital projects.
Not ever, I hope.
Pardon me?
Not ever, I hope.
No, true. But in terms of a long-range financial plan. We started with a presentation on revenues and expenditures back in November, and then went on to drainage, and I know that was one of your favorite topics. That was in December. And then we went to city facilities in March, had a presentation on that, and then earlier this month, a presentation on transportation. As I said, this is the last one on capital projects. That leaves one more project then coming up in May, which would be on the policies and strategies recommendations, which hopefully will set up your discussion regarding the balance, how to basically weigh the options, weigh the choices that are in front of you in terms of how we plan for the future, in terms of revenues and expenditures, and what capital projects. And of course, it does tie in with the previous discussion that you had regarding fees as well, because the school impact fees, voluntary fees are part of that equation. So using shorthand of calling this leisure services, the golf course, open space, parks, recreation activities, and trails are essential for a quality community. And I think everyone in the room agrees with that, or most everyone, anyway. The 2007 strategic plan for recreation services was based on an assessment of demographic information, existing facilities, and the proximity of those facilities to residents, as well as surveys of residents. In that, trails were the highest priority in that strategic plan. Here are all the priorities that were listed, trails, outdoor and indoor aquatic facilities, indoor fitness and exercise facilities in the north, natural areas and wildlife habitat, small neighborhood and large community parks, as well as improvements to the existing parks. Some of the challenges are a backlog of projects. The projects that were identified were based on the criteria listed in the strategic plan. And the other challenge, of course, is that there are more projects than there's money available. The C3 vision, the comprehensive plan, estimates the future population growth at 1.95% per year. And again, that's one of the challenges, is that going to be the actual growth? Is that going to be the actual growth, or is it going to be closer to the historical growth rate, which was 12% per year in the last decade, total of 118% during the decade? As we have more population growth, there's more demand for services and facilities. So, that's obviously going to be a key factor that we have to watch. Here are all the projects that were listed for leisure improvements. I have golf on a second page, separate from this, but you see a lot of loop trail and neighborhood connections for trails. Fairfax Park has to have drainage and irrigation renovation. Then, there's a number of new parks, Second Creek, First Creek, the Turnberry Neighborhood, as well as villages at Buffalo Run. There's a list of other facilities, like Recreation Fitness Center, Outdoor Aquatic Family Center, as well as land acquisition for Second Creek Community Park. Here are the golf improvements that have been identified. These are mostly replacement of existing items. They have 20- to 25-year life, and, hate to say this, but we're coming up close on that life cycle for the golf course already. So, we need to be looking at golf course irrigation replacement, pond liners, the cart path, as well as some major repairs on buildings. And then, we also have life, excuse me, life cycle replacement of equipment. And then, we also have major equipment in the restaurant that needs to be replaced. Total for all of that is 68.7 million. Now, we know we can't fund all of that in the next 10 years. We also know that the park impact fees cover only part of the cost. The other problem with the park impact fees is that a lot of the development where these fees will be generated is areas north of DIA, for an example. So, it's a timing issue as well. We're going to need facilities before all of that money comes in, and even when all of the money comes in, it's still approximately 60 million short. So, we need alternate funding sources. Some observations on the projects. Currently, we're using Adams County open space revenue, as well as lottery revenue through the Conservation Trust, and parks impact fee money for various trail connections now. We're also utilizing grants. So, we're trying to tap all the sources of income we can. The downside there is that if we're looking at using Adams County open space, or lottery revenue, or park impact fee money for new projects, that means existing projects are going to suffer. So, again, there's a trade-off, and we need to have guidance from council in terms of what you see as the priorities. Some of the golf, Buffalo Run Golf Course improvements can be funded from golf revenues, but again, you know, that's been a challenge in recent years, so we know that that funding is going to be limited as well. So, we do need to continue working to secure outside funding, and we need to priority rank these projects. Here's suggested criteria for the priority ranking. What can we afford to operate and maintain? What is not driven by or contingent on future development? And then, what projects were listed as priorities in the strategic plan? And what can be phased and funded? There's been desire expressed for a new recreation center in the north, and there's two challenges with that. One is the capital cost upfront, estimated at 20 million. The other is the issue of funding the annual operation and maintenance, estimated at 940,000 per year. The activity revenues generated in such a center will partially offset that operating cost, but we'll still be looking at a net operating cost of anywhere from a half a million to 800,000 per year. We know that the general fund can't pick up that half a million to 800,000 per year without some major changes in the budget. Again, that's going to raise issues of trade-offs and priorities. Some potential existing funding sources, like I mentioned, we're using some of those already. That's the Adams County open space and lottery revenue, as well as park impact fee revenue. We have the possibility of one-time tax assessments from the general fund. There's also the Future Growth Fund, which could be reactivated. However, the downside there is that takes money out of the general fund, because that's the trade-off between those two. As I mentioned, there's golf revenues. We also could use the existing general improvement district, however, that would need voter approval, and it would need agreements between the general improvement district and the city. We could use development metro districts. That would take a vote, possibly, of the voters within that metro district, and it would require an agreement between the metro district and the city. There are some potential new funding sources. We could impose fees to free up money in the general fund, and I've talked about this in other presentations. So, obviously, the trade-off there is, do you use the money for parks recreation, open space, you know, the leisure activities, or do you use it for things like road improvements? If we impose a stormwater utility fee, that would estimate, that would free up $650,000 per year, which would be available for other uses. You could impose a refuse collection fee, that would free up, potentially up to 1.8 million dollars per year. We could look at a general obligation debt, but again, that must be voted, and that involves a property tax increase. We could go to the voters and ask for a sales tax increase. Or, we could look at new general improvement districts, or a metropolitan district of some type, or a citywide park and recreation district. There's a lot of options, and again, choices that council will need to direct staff on which direction you want to go. Here are some suggested funding sources for some of the projects. Loop Trail and Neighborhood Connections, estimated at 8 million dollars. We could continue to fund those type of connections using Adams County open space and park impact fee and lottery revenues. Golf projects, at 3.7 million, that's more than what golf revenue can carry on its own, but again, it can partially carry that, so we would need to look to lottery and city funds to help fund that. Fairfax Park, that's going to require 2.2 million, two and a quarter million. City General Fund, park impact fee, Adams County open space, lottery revenues, all of those are potential funding sources. And then, we have the various parks that need to be built. Those are going to require alternative funding sources, as well as an outdoor aquatic center. That would require an outdoor, or require an alternative funding source. First Creek Community Park would also require alternative funding sources in order to be able to fund that. Anything we build or improve will increase the city's annual operating and maintenance costs. For example, with parks, those costs are estimated at $7,190 per acre for the neighborhood-sized parks. The large community parks, that's estimated at $6,654 per acre. So, again, something we have to take in to consideration when we look at the Long Range Financial Plan projections for future expenditures. In addition, we need to continue funding the major ongoing maintenance in the existing parks and trails. So, in summary, there's not enough money for all the capital investments needed, nor for the ongoing operation and maintenance costs, so we're going to need to set priorities, phase projects, pursue funding partnerships, and then explore alternative funding sources. And that's basically the recommendation for the Long Range Financial Plan, is set those priorities and phasing plans, and explore funding sources, and then we need to execute that plan. So, again, it's back to dumping this in your lap, I'm sorry to say, but we need guidance from council in terms of what those trade-offs are, and what you see as the priorities, and what direction you desire to give us. So, what's coming up now is the last presentation on the fiscal policies and strategies next month, and that will deal with the balance between capital budget and operating budget, as well as the priority setting for the various projects. And hopefully, that provides the information you need for your discussion in the proposed retreat. The other thing we'll do is we'll assemble the narrative chapters, and we'll present those to you in draft form as well, so we can have the opportunity to read those and comment on that. So, again, our last presentation next month. Any questions?
Mr. Moreno?
Roger, I'm noticing a common theme in all of your presentations, not enough money.
That is correct.
In Councilwoman Carson's absence, I did say that I would bring up something that is important to her and that she has discussed with a few staff members, and that's for this council to look at a dedicated sales tax increase solely for parks and recreation, and submitting that to a referendum on a ballot to the voters. So, I am just going to throw that out there. Don't shoot the messenger. Thanks.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thanks, Roger, for your presentation. Can you go back to the slide on the rec center in the north range? Right. You know, the capital, maybe I'm misinterpreting maybe the cost of the land, the cost of construction, but I've seen 30 million as a cost of a rec center, this being 20, and that's good. I mean, I hope that that's what it is. What would that include, that 20 million?
Okay, if I could comment, the difference of the 30 million versus the 20 million, I believe, is this assumes no indoor pool, whereas the 30 million would assume an indoor pool. And that has a substantial difference, or impact, on the operating costs as well annually.
That's a $10 million matter, an indoor pool.
And that's not, worse than we have the land.
Okay, this assumes we have the land, so that would be the other difference, land acquisition.
And do we, do we have some land up around Highway 2 and 112th? That's been talked about for this purpose.
We have land at Havana and 104th, but beyond that, I'm not aware. That's the only one, evidently.
Mr. Aker?
I believe what you're remembering is when we were having that discussion about the baseball stadium a few years ago.
Right.
With the firm that wanted to bring it in. They, that was on 104th up to 112th along Highway 2, but we do not own that land.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. I know that, as Mr. Moreno says, it's only a matter of coming up with about $100 million. So, to get all of this stuff done, but...
I hate to sound like I'm correcting you, but if you want to build everything, we're only talking a billion dollars.
A billion?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Snyder?
I was just trying to make it sound better.
Hi, Roger. I just want to say thank you, as always, for your insightful presentations. We have a lot of tough decisions to make, and as everyone else has said, a lot to do with very little money, so hopefully, we'll be able to sit down and figure out what, I mean, it's very hard, very difficult to decide which things to fund when there's not a lot to go around, so, but I want to say thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock? I've seen your name, and then it goes down, and it comes back, and it goes, and so I don't know whether to call you or not call you.
I'm going to ask Roger for his.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, and then, Mr. Moreno.
Roger, that's 68.7 million dollars, that's just for all new projects, correct?
That, yes, that was for the projects that were identified in the strategic plan. So, if, you know, if there are other projects that council feels are higher priority, then obviously, that's going to change that number, but yes, that would be new facilities only.
Okay. If you take out what we have already, and the maintenance that it costs, you didn't add that cost in there already, did you?
No, that was only capital cost.
Okay, so, basically, that billion dollars you were talking about is, if everything came true in our dream?
That's true, yes.
And the maintenance that would take to fund it for the come true time?
Well, the billion dollars would be the capital cost of all roads and parks and trails and open space and facilities, all of that, you know, lumped together. That does not include operating costs, it's capital costs only.
Okay, so, we're talking about a BN plus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ooh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Just right on the parade, Councilman Bullock. Roger, it's, when you calculate the activity revenues and the operating costs for a potential northern range recreation center, is that based on any of the numbers that we have in the Core City Recreation Center, or how are those numbers calculated?
When I did my presentation several months ago on the facilities, I based it on the existing recreation center, but again, that number will vary with what programs are offered, and so it's a little hard to judge. The number here, that 940,000 was based, I believe, on the information that was gathered for the strategic plan at that time, so that was, is that correct? I'm looking to Carolyn Keith for guidance on that. I believe that's where that number was generated.
It was a combination of our, the facility and the course.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Just to follow up what Mr. Moreno said in the beginning, what kind of a tax could we impose solely for the benefit of parks and recreation? And I know this is, Brighton does this, and they seem to have some things going on that we don't right now. What would we need to do? Because it's getting to the point right now where we're going to have to decide whether we want to put something on the ballot in November. I'm thinking if we're going to do anything about this, we need to get working on it and just have some presentation made about what we want to do, and how much it's going to cost, how, what kind of a tax do you envision that that would be? A property tax, a sales tax, or what?
You can impose a property tax and have it dedicated as part of the vote, or you could do that with a sales tax increase, and again, dedicate that, but I would defer to the city attorney, but that's my understanding, is you can, you can structure that ballot issue basically however you want, and dedicate it, either one of those two tax sources.
All right. Well, I would ask Mr. Gaylor, how can we go about, can we have, and I'd like to get the council's approval, to have some sort of a presentation about how we could do this, just the pros and the cons of doing it, and doing it this fall, so we can figure out whether we want to do it, because we're getting close to the time, it's going to be, Ms. Bauer, is that going to be about August the 15th, when you would have to have that in?
The ballot needs, the ballot language has to be certified to the Adams County Clerk in a quarter in the first week of September.
The first week of September, okay. So, we do have a little bit of time to do that, okay.
One of the, one of the tools that we just went out with to Corona Research, you may remember, we did a survey a few years ago, I think in '07, on different facilities and different initiatives, and we've conducted that as well again, and that's, that's something that will be a good tool to narrow your focus in maybe what the priorities that come back from that research survey is. It's a fairly accurate scientific method, so when we get that information back, we can bring, and we've got some of it back, but we were trying to work with Corona to interpret a number of things, but, so we have some basic raw numbers, and what we'd like to do is come back to you with that in the next few weeks and present that to you, so you can see what the survey results list as higher priorities versus lower priorities. That'll help you target your budget, and that, maybe we can roll in a component of what items might, might be good to go to a ballot with, and what might not be, you know, a good one either, so.
And whatever the priorities, I guess, whatever tax that the people might vote for would be used for those priorities.
That's correct.
And I guess that would probably be part of the ballot.
My only hesitancy on that one, Councilman Benson, is, is a survey, you almost need a survey to see what that might poll as. I mean, you've probably heard, we've all heard a lot about the RTD, they've been talking about that for six months, and whether or not they're going to go to the ballot or not, but they've got a number of, they've got a lot of data there, and so I feel... or not, but they've got a number of, they've got a lot of data there, and so I feel we're a little bit short of that, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can't go to a ballot because we're a lot smaller jurisdiction.
Right. I just, do we need a consensus of the council, or is this something that you're going to do anyway?
We're going to bring, we're going to bring the results of that, that survey to you in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So probably mid, mid-May.
Mr. Moreno?
Just wanted to echo Councilman Benson, I, I think it is going to be a very interesting issue to look at, and, you know, would like to see a study session on some of those ballot initiatives that council is looking to perhaps put, to vote of the people this November, you know, that being one, and I know at the council retreat, we discussed a few others in terms of reforming boards and commissions, and an additional medical marijuana tax. So I think that's going to be a very interesting discussion to have. Roger, I wanted to ask if you could go a little bit more in depth into the concept of a Parks and Recreation District? I imagine any revenue that is to be gained from that kind of district would still need to be approved by voters, correct?
Yes, a district would be basically a new governmental entity, and it would impose a property tax, so it, it would be, it would have all the powers, but also all the limitations of a property tax, you know, it, from a popularity standpoint, property tax is generally not at the top of the list, so that certainly would be one of the downsides. But what we intend to bring to you are many different funding sources and options with estimated amounts those would generate, so that you truly can choose from that menu.
And based on that district, would, I imagine it'd be similarly structured to like a GID, or?
It's basically a special district, so it's similar to like a metropolitan district in many ways.
Gotcha. And council would still be the governing authority on that, and I imagine any revenues would need to be spent solely on parks and recreation?
Yes to the latter. I'm not sure that that's necessarily automatically the case, that the council would serve as the board.
Okay.
I think the city attorney is saying it could be structured that way, but again, that would have to be a conscious choice.
That's, that's someone trying to tell you, can we hurry this up a little? Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. I guess if, if there would be a new, a new GID, or a new metropolitan district, it would need to be co-terminous with this city, because I wouldn't want just the people from the North Range to be paying for a rec center up there, because we're already paying for the rec center in the South. And I don't know that that's going to be a good idea, to say we're going to pay for our own rec center, since we're already paying for the one in the South.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't know.
You know, and I think these are the discussions that really occur in all of these topics, and I think that's, that's something that, if we dedicate maybe an hour conversation a couple weeks, three weeks from now, that might be where we have a good conversation about it in depth, because I think we're going to have a lot of these different opinions, which aren't bad, I think it's just a matter of going through.
Just make that one of the, one of the topics about who should be paying for the rec center. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm going to, but I wouldn't want to do metro district or anything that would involve a property tax. I'd rather see, which, if it came back to council, when it does, something that involves a sales tax, because that means that the people that even come into town and worked on the day and go someplace else, when they buy here, it contributes to the benefit of the city, instead of just the people that live here, because there are a lot that are already being property taxed and feed to death, so I want to make this across the board. But I, I'm getting what City Manager Flannery says, it's something he's going to bring back to us, so let's wait till it's brought back to us, and then we can talk about it in depth.
Ms. Teeter, wouldn't you like to add to this, because you're the only one who hasn't talked yet?
They've asked all parties, and you've been answering them.
No. Ms. Snyder?
I agree with...
No, I was kidding.
No, I agree with Mr. Bullock, that we need to further, you know, ask these questions when you come back with that information. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, and not to be left out of this discussion, I would really like to take a serious, hard look at this before we even think about putting anything on the ballot for more taxes, because I think right now, you know, especially right now, you know, that's going to have to be something that's going to be, you know, really, really looked at, I'm concerned about that, so we'll have that when the discussion comes. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And again, just so there's no misunderstanding, we have plenty of money to pay our bills. With this, our new projects, we would love someone just to give us money for. I'm tired of people saying, when they hear, oh, we don't have money to build a new rec center, they think we've squandered it somewhere.
That is true.
Thank you. Okay, next, executive session. Next item is executive session, discussing economic development opportunity, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024E for the purpose of determining position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning an economic development opportunity or opportunities in Commerce City.
Ms. Teeter?
Second emotion?
It's been moved in second to go into executive session, is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have voiced vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same, will be in executive session, should take approximately 15 minutes. Hey, we're back in session, and we're going to go to administrative business, and why don't we start, is there any administrative business?
I don't have anything. Okay, let's go on to reports.
Okay. On to reports, you want to start with Mr. Moreno?
Did you even get a chance to get my chair first? I don't really have much to report on, other than, over the weekend, got to, it was actually a pretty busy weekend, took a tour of the new high school, they're having alumni kind of open house, so that was nice to see. Got to stop by the wonderful work of Ms. Bauer here, and what she managed to do with the prom dress exchange. I think this community owes you a debt of gratitude for the work you put into that, and we really appreciate it. The girls, I know, appreciated it. At one point, I was there, and there was a girl trying on a dress, and if anyone's seen the movie The Big Fat Greek Wedding, it reminded me of that, where she comes out in a dress, and all the women run over there and say how beautiful she looks. It, it was definitely a self-esteem booster for the girls that were there, I think, but it was a great event, and congratulations.
Mr. Benson?
Well, we had a Dr. Cog meeting on Wednesday, and I left all my stuff in my briefcase, so I'll have to report on that next week. I do have some, not slides, but pictures that I want to show about work that they plan to do on the tunnels this side of Idaho Springs, about how they plan to expand them and maybe go around them. It's an interesting, interesting slides, I guess. There are about six different proposals, varying from 55 billion to 105 billion, and of course, their, the favorite one is the $105 billion project, but I'll have more on that next Monday, if I can remember to bring my briefcase. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Teeter?
No report.
Mr. Bullock?
Is this report to administrative business?
We passed administrative business, it's reports.
Oh, okay, the only report I have is remembering that the Historical Society luncheon is Sunday, May 1st, at 1:00, and I had a question for Mr. McBroom about the request about chambers, them checking on that, waiving the fee and checking with that, that the council okayed, and did that go through, or is it still in this, or still doing the checking?
The application is still under review by city staff.
Okay.
A quarter for seven. Is that it? Okay. I'm going to run through this stuff real quick. Mr. Flannery, something for you. City Westminster is teaming with Brothers Redevelopment on some low-income housing, and see if that'll fit anyplace with our stuff. Habitat is doing all of their dedications coming up, they should be on your calendar. I got a thank you letter from Congressman Pearl Mutter because of Mizraam Cordero, helping him set up the Healthcare Forum. We got a recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation, thank you to Parks and Rec over that. And today, I met with a land trust group that's trying to turn Riverside Cemetery into a historic and Parks and Rec place. Right now, they're just trying to find out if we had any interest. I said we would have interest in sitting in a group to see if there's anything that we can do. Fairmont's looking to sell it, they want to sell it for a dollar if people will just take over the upkeep of the place, so...
What, the graves?
The graves would stay, but I mean, there's a big piece of land there, and there's a lot of our Colorado governors that are actually buried there, there's a lot of history in that place. Plus, there's a trail right now that goes along the South Platte. They didn't know where it goes after it leaves their property, but they said the trail's already in, so it must go somewhere, so it might be something we want to look at. It's not for anything now, they're just trying to figure out who should be invited. Mr. Bullock, just for you...
That's in two jurisdictions, you know.
What?
Denver.
Yes. 13, 13 acres is in Denver, the rest is ours, and the only thing Denver owns is the access inn, so, and Denver's part of this little group they're putting together. I have given your wife's name and email address because of the Historic Society, to see if she would like to be involved in it also, so they'll be giving her a call, saying, do you want to be part of this group that's looking at it? Well, I thought she would, but at least I wanted to warn you. Mr. Moreno? I knew we weren't going to get out that fast, I was trying to talk as fast as I could.
It was a valiant effort. I got a little flustered and forgot to mention that the conference that the mayor and I both attended, as well as City Manager Flannery, a really great conference, I'll have a more comprehensive update next week, this week was a little busy with Easter and everything, but just for council, plan on seeing that report next week.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Just quickly, I wanted to also say thank you to Laura Bauer for her wonderful work with the prom dress exchange, very sweet, and I just, I know it was a lot of work for you, and I just really appreciate your efforts in doing that. So best of luck and continued success in the years to come on that project. Adam City High School had legal night this last week, I wanted to say thank you to the different lawyers that showed up to offer citizens some help on some legal issues. That's always nice to get some advice for free and to get some direction when you're having some, some issues. Like to thank Brian McBroom for helping me out with several citizen issues, I gave him a lengthy list, and he sought to all of them and gave me updates for all of them, and I appreciate that, so thank you very much. And lastly, I attended the pancake breakfast, pancake breakfast and Easter egg hunt at Turnberry Elementary, and that was a great event that was done by Open Door Fellowship, I'd like to thank them, they did a great job, there were a lot of kids that turned out for it, and it looked like they were really having a good time with those pancakes and those eggs, so thank you to Turnberry, and actually, thank you to Open Door Fellowship for doing that at Turnberry. That's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Benson, did you have something else?
Yes, you know, I guess administrative business, I didn't hear that, it's maybe my old age, but can I just, with your permission, Mr. Natal, could I just...
Can I, can I just go to Mr. Flannery, Mr. Gaylor first, and then we'll go back?
Sure, sure.
Mr. Flannery?
Nothing specific, Mr. Mayor, except I will be, I was asked to participate in the interview panel for the next superintendent for 27J, so I'll be sitting on that panel this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gaylor?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. You know, I hear from citizens in both the North Range and the South part of our city about who is paying for, and who paid for, all of the infrastructure in the North Range. And I keep hearing opinions on both sides of that, and I'd like to get to the bottom of that and just say, this is what the North Range costs, and this is where the money was raised. How, how much time would that take, Mr. Flannery?
Mr. Ga, or Mr. Tinklinberg, he just sent that out to us, it seems like.
Yeah, I, I don't know the specifics, but I can tell you, and the general concept was, is that that's a general improvement district that's paid for strictly by the North Range, and the revenues generated by that property tax in the North Range paying for that.
That's kind of the way I've looked at it, and could we get something in our city paper about that, because there's a lot of confusion about that. There are a lot of people in the South that think that they're paying for everything that happened up north, and that's just a misconception that I'd like to see corrected in our city newspaper, if we could, because it's not, that's not true, as you just said. What do we need to do? Do we need to get a consensus of the council to do that, or how would we do that?
You can print it in paper.
You don't need to, all we have to do is have them put a party in that, how the North Range is being paid for?
Sure. So that's okay with everybody? I'd like to see that done. Thank you, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Natal.
Thank you. Mr. Flannery, do we have legislative tonight?
No.
Okay. There be no further business coming before this board. We're adjourned. Everybody, drive safe going home.
See you tomorrow.
Oh, sorry.